This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the Town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our April North Haven Board of Selectmen meeting. I'm Michael Frida. Welcome to this meeting. I'd like to also introduce, joining us tonight again, our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Bowemy. We're delighted to be here tonight, and thank you for coming. As always, I'd like to ask everyone to stand for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice.
I'd like to wish, I'd like to let everyone know that we had a birthday this past week. This young man is in our audience tonight, Sherman Katz. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Another birthday, and thank you for your continued attendance at our meeting, sir. Happy birthday, Sherman. Any public comments to the agenda? Item number two. All right. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll move to item number three, approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectmen meeting from March 1st, ladies and gentlemen.
I'll move the approval of those minutes.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item number four, the move or approval of the minutes from the special meeting of the Board of Selectmen from March 12th.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We'll move to item number five. Yes, God bless you. We'll move to item number five, ladies and gentlemen. I direct your attention to the TV screens onto the side, off to the sides here. And this is an overview that I wanted to share with you. From an operational standpoint, our 2018 spring bulk pickup will commence starting April 16th, and this will continue through Friday, April 27th. Curbside collection will start at that time. This is a little bit later this year than normal, based on some of the, some of the weather we've had. So we're doing it the last two weeks of this year. Our Public Works Department will be out there during that two-week period. Please, if you have anything to go out, please ensure it is out during those two weeks. We would appreciate it. Residents, as you see, are encouraged to place bulk items at the curb along with their regular sanitation by 5:00 a.m. on their designated sanitation collection day. That's when it will be picked up during those two weeks. And if you have any other questions, you can always visit the town website for specifics regarding what the acceptable bulk items are. From a financial standpoint, we had our budget meeting the other night at the high school, and that was Tuesday night, April 3rd. The next series of events will be a Monday, May 7th meeting at the high school, the annual town budget meeting, followed by a referendum on Tuesday, May 15th. Now, what's not on here is this. There will be another Board of Finance meeting later this month, and I would like to share this with everybody here and everybody watching on TV. We will not go to a referendum with a 1.7 mil tax increase. That's $360 on average household. We're not doing it. That's what you saw the other night, and we're going to have to work to get this budget down. I think that's too high of a budget for North Haven residents. Again, we are not going to a referendum with a 1.7 mil increase. The referendum will be Tuesday, May 15th. From an economic development standpoint, our annual breakfast is April 12th at Fantasia. This will consist of approximately 130 North Haven businesses that join us. We have one or two speakers, and this is a forum where I give the business community an update as to the new economic development initiatives that are occurring in the town. Anyone interested in attending may contact Valerie, because it is open to the public, and you can RSVP or register online at northhavenedc.com. Amazon, I was out there today. What's starting to emerge from the ground is a foundation. They're doing the site work for the foundation. We are still on track for May of 2019 to be fully up and running. But as we've spoken about many times, the revenue from Amazon will not hit in the next couple of years. It's a couple more fiscal years down the road. So although we're very pleased with this revenue coming in, we're very pleased with the job creation that it's going to deliver, we should not be spending now for money we don't have. We have, we'll have to wait for that revenue to come in. Toys R Us. I was interviewed by Channel 8 the other night. We're working very closely with the, with the landlord there. It's a national company. We have a very good relationship with Ripco. Ripco is the commercial real estate agent, and I'd like to see it, I'd like to see at the Toys R Us, a Whole Foods or a Trader Joe's. Those are difficult to accomplish, difficult objectives, but we've put it out there. There's an online survey to try to get Trader Joe's. I was on Facebook last month encouraging residents to sign that, that petition stating that North Haven would like a Trader Joe's. I believe in that section of town, we need another grocery store. What's a little-known fact is that in the Target Shopping Center, based on the terms of the sale years and years ago, back in the 80s, when Stop &amp; Shop and Universal Distributors sold that to National Realty, in that sales agreement, no grocery store can go in that Target Shopping Center. And I only learned that when Sports Authority went out, because I had Fresh Market in Guilford that was interested in coming into North Haven. Couldn't do it because of that sales agreement. So we're still working with National Realty. We'll probably, I think, end up trying to subdivide the Sports Authority. We'd like to get a Home Goods. That is the one I'm really looking at to fill it out, but that's undetermined at this point. So my point in telling you this is I'm sharing with you the work in progress, and I'm going to use a baseball analogy. Sally and Bill are baseball fans. And baseball's a lot like economic development. In my amateur baseball career, I've played approximately 1,200 games with a career average of 354. So you would think that's pretty good, right? But that means I failed 64.6% of the time. And you realize in economic development, for every 10 at-bats, you're going to probably make 6.5 to 7 outs. And we've made a lot of outs. We've struck out a lot of times, because many times we cannot control the pricing structure between the opportunity, prospective tenant, and the landlord. So when you see me say things like, "Home Goods," "Trader Joe's," "Whole Foods," this is what we'd like to see, but that doesn't mean they're going to come. These are our goals and objectives. 33 Styles Lane. This is a nice story. So I've been working with a company called Calair. They're a Boston-based real estate company. They bought the Bristol Myers facility in Wallingford. They just bought 33 Styles Lane. We worked closely with them to get a new tenant in there, and the fact that we were able to get the tenant in there and they were happy with us in North Haven, that precipitated the sale of the building, because Calair needed the tenant to buy the building. So BYK's coming in there. BYK's largest customer, Sherwin-Williams Paint Stores. A wholesale distribution facility will go there, fill out what is now a vacant 133,000 square feet, and you will be phasing in 30, 40, 50, up to 100 jobs over the next couple of years. 84 Washington Avenue, the old John Henry Building, that will be torn down and repurposed. Couple of interested tenants. One is a financial services company. We tried to get a Bruger's Bagel there, but you can't get a drive-through in there. The traffic is too hazardous there. And so retail is going to be difficult there, because, as you could well imagine, traveling Route 5 north, and when you're going north in peak traffic and people start taking the right-hand turns and the queue traffic backs up, that's a problem. And that would be a problem if we tried to get something there. Most retail restaurants want the drive-through, and it would be very prohibitive from a traffic standpoint. And being a state road, the STC, State Traffic Commission, would never allow it anyway. Land Rover, we're looking at late summer, early fall for that to be completed. Kimberly Plaza, I met with the family, a wonderful family, the Baldarelli family. Dino Baldarelli started Dino's in North Haven. Dino Baldarelli worked at Jimmy's in West Haven. And the family's getting older, wonderful people. We found a buyer for them, and that plaza has been sold. A new buyer will take, a new landlord or owner will take it over, and we hope to see some improvements there in the next couple of years. 494 Washington Avenue, 494, where Cortina Tile is, just north of that gas station on Bradley, we found someone to purchase that, and my hope is that will be renovated also. And that gas station on the corner, I have found a buyer for that, and we're hoping that will be renovated also. So, you know, some of these are small businesses which we also focus greatly on, and they're very important to us, and they're all excited, the small businesses, that Amazon's coming in in a couple of years. Because I've said it before, in the world of economic development, a rising tide of big businesses coming in lifts a lot of smaller boats, which are smaller businesses. We've got delis and restaurants on Washington Avenue and State Street, whose business is up 50 to 75% because of companies like Yale and Haven Hospital, Quinnipiac University, 297 State Street is fully up and running right now. People, people may not realize that in 2009, that was an empty building. Now, we have three companies in there, 350 jobs on 297 State Street. So that's, these are all good things, but the small businesses are very important. Dell Acres Plaza was sold. We're trying to get a handle on the new owner, what they'd like to do there. That's where the old seafood store was, that brick building across the street from Bradley. So that is a target area for us to bring in more small businesses. Leon's will not open. They're not going to be reopening. And we're working with the landlord, Alex Vigliotti, to try to get another restaurant in there, because it would be a good thing. The restaurant equipment, the kitchen facilities are there, so it, it would be a benefit for another restaurant to go in, because there's not a great deal of fit out. A lot of it's already there. So one of the major projects that I've been working on is 100 Powder Metal Drive, a building that's been vacant for decades. We found a buyer for it. I've met with the buyer. The buyer's attorney. The building's being renovated right now. Permits are being pulled, which is a revenue item for the town. And once it's fully renovated, we have two or three tenants that are interested going in there. So that is the old Martin Printing Company, years and years ago, closed here in North Haven. 57 Dodge Avenue, we're working with this company. It'll be a 12,000-square-foot addition. And what we want in economic development is businesses to expand here in North Haven. That's an expansion. And I have a meeting coming up with the largest taxpayer in town, the largest employer in town, Medtronics. Here's the good news. They're expanding in North Haven, and we want that. The notion of the largest business and taxpayer in town wanting to expand in our town is a very good thing. So that, I'll have more on that after my meeting with their top management. On the Stop &amp; Shop Plaza, you know, we met months and months ago with a very successful small business in Cheshire called Bagelicious. And we worked with Stop &amp; Shop, the management team on the real estate side. We were able to execute a buyout of the lease, because Taco Bell and KFC still had about eight to 10 years on that lease. Eight to 10 years. And that was a lot of revenue for Stop &amp; Shop. Not a lot of motivation to do anything there, right? Because they got the revenue coming in, but we were, we were faced with a boarded-up building out there. Wasn't something I was happy about, ladies and gentlemen. Make a long story short, we met with Bagelicious. They liked the facility, and if you drive by there, you'll see it's being built out. And off to the left, you see a new Asian grill coming in on the site of the old Hibachi Grill. So those are, that represents, ladies and gentlemen, about 20,000 square feet of vacant space currently being populated. The North Haven Shopping Center, I'm going to, I'd like to give you another baseball analogy. There's not going to be home runs hit here. There's going to be some singles and maybe a couple of doubles. But I can guarantee you, because I have met with the owner of the plaza, we have a lot of smaller businesses coming in that will be good. And when an Amazon comes in in a couple of years, these small businesses like the fact that we're going to have 1,800 to 3,000 more jobs here, and maybe these businesses, some of them will be restaurants in that plaza, that will hopefully thrive long-term. So you're going to see that plaza be filled out probably in its entirety within the next 12 to 18 months. From a noteworthy standpoint, we'd like to remind everyone that April is Child Abuse Prevention Month. This is a program that was started by Raymond and Sally Fowler. It is now taken over by the Community Services Department in conjunction with DCF, the Department of Children and Families. And I'd like to thank the Fowlers for their vision in starting this program, and you may see Town Hall dressed in blue with pinwheels. That is a symbol of child abuse, and it's a very important program for us that once again was started by Raymond and Sally Fowler. That is an example off to the left of some of the pinwheels you see, and this is a sign on the green that we put, "North Haven stands up for children. April is Child Abuse Prevention Month." Our North Haven Substance Abuse Action Council once again will hold a pill return Saturday, April 28th, at Fire Headquarters on Broadway. The hours will be 10 to 2. Ladies and gentlemen, over the last eight years, we've taken hundreds and hundreds of thousands of prescription drug units out of the medicine cabinets of North Haven. Remember this, 53% of those that get hooked on heroin start with prescription drugs. I am on a mission on this issue in town. This is a prevailing problem all over the United States. Every mayor I talk to tell me they have overdoses every month. This is a mission that we're going to do everything we can, and as I once said to the Substance Abuse Council, even if we can save one life, it's worth it.
Well, plus, it's also, I mean, even for non-narcotic medicines, it's a good idea to, to bring them there instead of, you know, flushing them down the, flushing them down the drain or whatever, which is not good for the water supply.
Very true.
You know, I mean, that, you know, any kind of prescription medication or, you know, that you have, that you know, that it's outdated or you're no longer needing, I mean, it's a great way to, you know, if you have things left over, I mean, even, you know, even, you know, any kind of medication. I know sometimes people will take all their antibiotics, you know, because they do recover quickly, even though maybe they should, but still something that shouldn't go down the, go down the drain, you know, because it's not great for the water supply.
Earth Day, April 7th, at the North Haven High School. This, that's this Saturday from 10 to 12. And the Earth Day Committee, they've done a great job putting together a fun event for the whole family. Be many activities, freebies, crafts, and tips for greener and healthier lives. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay. Before we go on to item six, I'd just have a couple of questions about your overview.
Sure.
On the bulk pickup, I know that you appropriately told the citizens they could check the website for what could be picked up. I'm getting a lot of questions about all of the storm debris that people are still faced with, myself included. I lost a huge tree in the back. That might not specifically be referenced on the, on the website. I know that the Public Works trucks have already started going around picking up.
Yes.
But if you could just give an update, I mean, can people put out, is there any limit to the wall of debris you could put out in front?
Yes, and you know what? Valerie's directly involved with this too, but I'll tee it up by saying that we are picking up storm debris. We asked that it be put on the curb neatly stacked. I know a couple of residents had put it in the actual trash can barrels, and it wasn't picked up. That's not what should be done. Keeping in mind now that there's grinders, okay? And you can't have a Public Works person pick up a trash barrel and then put the trash barrel in the grinder for fear that the whole thing could get pulled into that. You know, this is a very expensive, costly, and a very carefully orchestrated service that we offer, because it's hazardous for the Public Works Department. So if it's stacked neatly, hopefully in four-to-five-foot sections, Public Works will pick it up. They've been going around the different streets, and you could certainly call Public Works if you're putting it out a certain day, let's say they were on the street, they will, they will pick it up.
Yeah, they're picking it up, not necessarily just the day that your garbage picked up.
That's right.
Because they, my, on my street, it's picked up on Thursday mornings. They came on a different day. There were two vehicles, a big, huge truck, and then there was one guy loading branches that were put out into like a big shovel, and then they were loading. So it's not necessarily, you know, garbage, the, the regular sanitation guys.
That's right.
So people can put debris.
Yes.
Does it have to be the same limit, you know, like a four-foot?
Well, they'll take branches. I mean, it's easier if it's bundled, obviously, but if you've just had like a branch that came down, they'll take branches. What is becoming a bit of a problem, however, Sally, is that some people have had very large, large trees come down on their property, and then they're paying someone to come in and cut down the tree, but then they're bringing all of that to the front for disposal. That's really not what it's designed for, because we have to pay per load to get rid of that wood. So it's becoming very costly to the town. We don't have that in the budget, so we can't be disposing of these big, large trees. So what we're asking the homeowners to do is if you are paying a service to come in and cut these big, big trees, that you also ask them to dispose of the tree as well. We will take branches and smaller trees and debris like that, single odd branches, but big, big pine trees and big, big trees that are in the yard that are requiring a tree service to come and cut them down, we're really not designed to dispose of that.
Right. Okay.
Because it is costly to the town, because we have to pay for each load that we bring.
Okay. So I, I just thought that was important, because it's, there's still a lot of debris you drive around, just, you know, we got hit with some pretty crazy storms in March. We all know that.
It's kind of like, just use your judgment.
Right.
If it's really, really large, it's really not designed for Public Works.
And secondly, I just wanted to touch on, you were talking about filling some, you know, Toys R Us, Sports Authority, maybe Whole Foods or Trader Joe's. I gotta say, I've only been to one Trader Joe's once, and it was in Kentucky. I didn't, it, it, what I was wondering is if, do you see any possibility of bringing in another discount store to replace Expect Discount? Because I know a lot of our citizens miss that type of store, which also sold food, but also a lot of other items at a much cheaper rate than you would get like at a supermarket. Do you see any potential for a discount store that could help?
Well, I like the Price Right model. Price Right's a byproduct of Shop Right. It's a discount Shop Right. We had them very interested in the North Haven Shopping Center back about a year and a half ago, but there was a problem with the parking lot. I tried to see if we can get them at Sports Authority, and again, I learned that we can't put a grocery store in a Sports Authority. So it would be one of the options potentially for Toys R Us. You know, when Expect Discount went out, they went out all over. They're no longer in business, Expect Discount.
Right.
And it was a popular store here.
Very popular, and people miss it. Yeah.
So I think the answer to your question is yes. We definitely need a discount grocery store on that side of town. So that's certainly an option.
Right. Okay. And then, you know, I know, again, I just have to say I'm a little sad to hear about 84 Washington Avenue. I know in its current shape, it looks pretty bad, but I always thought it was, had potential as a kind of grand old building to be renovated, but...
Well, let's not discount that, though.
If it's going, it's going.
Let's not discount that, because I agree with you on this, okay?
Yeah.
And if you go, if you look over north of Bellinis, on the westbound side of Washington Avenue, you'll see the old law offices being renovated.
Right.
And that's going to be Gargano Family Dentistry. And what we're trying to accomplish here, because we respect the history of North Haven, is to try to find developers that can replicate the historic charm of what the buildings once were in the renovation process. Now, I happen to know the CEO of the company who owns that building, and I'm appeal, I'm going to be appealing to them to please see if we can do something to replicate the historical charm. So I would agree with you on that.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sally, or Sally and Bill, can you read the rest of this?
Yeah.
Item number five.
I'll, I'll start. It's item six, Fair Housing Resolution, Town of North Haven. Whereas all persons are afforded a right to full and equal housing opportunities in the neighborhood of their choice, and federal fair housing laws require that all individuals, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, family status, or national origin, be given equal access to all housing-related opportunities, including rental and homeownership opportunities, and be allowed to make free choices regarding housing location. And Connecticut Fair Housing laws require that all individuals, regardless of race, creed, color, national origin, ancestry, sex, marital status, age, lawful source of income, family status, learning disability, physical or mental disability, sexual orientation, be given equal access to all housing-related opportunities, including rental and homeownership opportunities, and be allowed to make free choices regarding housing location. And the Town of North Haven is committed to upholding these laws and realizing, realizes that these laws must be supplemented by an affirmative statement publicly endorsing the right of all people to full and equal housing opportunities in the neighborhood of their choice.
Bill.
Bill, you can go.
Thank you. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of North Haven hereby endorses a fair housing policy to ensure equal opportunity for all persons to rent, purchase, obtain financing, enjoy all other housing-related services of their choice on a nondiscriminatory basis as provided by state and federal law. And be it further resolved that the chief executive officer of the Town of North Haven or his designated representative is responsible for responding to and assisting any person who alleges to be the victim of an illegal discriminatory housing practice in the Town of North Haven, and for advising such person of the right to file a complaint. The State of Connecticut Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities, or the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, or to seek assistance from the Connecticut Fair Housing Center Legal Services or other fair housing organizations to protect his or her right to equal housing opportunities.
Okay. So...
You're taking a motion on the resolution this night?
Yeah, I, we will. I just wanted to explain that this is a procedural issue every year that we are required to do, and we support this 100%. This is a state-federal type of resolution, and we bring it forward every year just to reiterate our commitment to it and be in compliance with state laws. So I'd like to ask for a motion on this.
Yes, I'll move the Fair Housing Resolution as read into the record.
I'll second the motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Sally and Bill, please continue.
Item seven is a call for the annual budget town meeting to be held on Monday, May 7th, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. in the auditorium of the North Haven High School, 221 Elm Street, North Haven, Connecticut. Referendum to be held on Tuesday, May 15th, 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next.
Next item is the appointment of Ralph H. Black, Jr., 257 Clintonville Lane, to the Library Board of Directors to fill the unexpired term of Peter McFedren, M.D., whose term is to expire on December 31st, 2019.
Ralph Black is a North Haven resident, was heavily involved with the city of New Haven for many years, was actually acting fire chief for a while, a man that brings an incredible background here to North Haven, working with residents, school system, children, and he'll be a great asset on this board, and we thank him for his interest in, in this position. So I'd like to ask for a motion.
Well, before I make the motion, I just want to say that I've known Dr. McFedren...
Yes.
...for decades, really, at least 30 years, and he served on... For decades, really, at least 30 years, and he served on the library board, I don't know, at least 20 years, I would say. And just, just a great man of the highest integrity, and I know how dedicated he was to the library board, so we certainly should thank him for his long-term service.
I totally agree, and I'm glad you brought that up because his wife, Letty McFedron, was involved on our Clean Energy Task Force for years. She may have even sat on the library board. They were wonderful citizens in North Haven, and about two to three months ago, they sent me a card in the mail, they're now living at Elam Park.
Right.
And they gave me their new contact information. They both made really wonderful contributions to the town.
Yeah, they lived in the Grove and they were just, as a team, just two incredible people, and obviously still are incredible people, and totally dedicated to the town. Letty was very active in the clean energy. But, so I think the Board of Selectment certainly sends its appreciation in this particular appointment to Dr. McFedron for his service on the library board for at least 20 years. I've lost track.
Val, we sent him a thank you letter, right? We sent Peter McFedron.
Yeah, because he resigned several months ago, this position's been open for a while, and I think we did acknowledge his resignation previously.
Okay.
So I'll second the appointment as read.
And I think, you know, Ralph wrote a very nice, I think, note to Mike, in terms of Z-mail, you know, requesting to be on the library board. And I thought it was very well-written in terms of, I consider the library a vital piece of what makes North Haven such a special place to live. I've used the, to kind of summarize it, I've used the library as a North Haven resident for over 50 years, and we've been friends of the library for many years. So I think just based on the nice things you said about Dr. McFedron, you know, I think he'd be a very good replacement, not only based on his, you know, professional background, but for somebody who realizes how important the library is.
Absolutely.
Great.
So I'll second that. I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, please continue. Sally, Bill?
Yeah, I'll move the property tax refunds as reflected in the agenda.
All right.
I'll second that.
Motion second, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, please continue.
Next item on the agenda is bond releases. Looks like 10-02 Founders Preserve Hitching Post released the entire bond balance in the amount of $4,000 with the recommendation of the Inland Wetland Commission. And then 16-09 Whitewood Apartments for 392 State Street released the entire balance in the amount of $2,500, also with the recommendation of the Inland Wetlands Commission. I'll make a motion to move that.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. In the discussion, I just wanted to acknowledge that the backup is in the packet here, and thanks to a recommendation a couple of years ago by Sherman Katz, we now have backups in all of these packets when we have bond releases, so, thank you, sir. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Well, we're at the end here. Next meeting of the Board of Selectment, Thursday, May 3rd, 2018, at 7:00 PM. We're at the point, ladies and gentlemen, of public comment. Mary White.
Mary White Summerlane, could you please give us the status of the town ordinance banning storage, the storage transfer and application of fracking waste?
Yes, it's become a very controversial issue all over Connecticut. I'm fully committed to it, but Mary, as you know, that I'm heavily involved with Connecticut Conference of Municipalities right now as one of their vice presidents. And they're, the state is contemplating a state law banning fracking. So there are a few towns that Jen mentioned when she was here a couple of months ago that have gone with this, but the feedback we're getting is that once the town passes the ordinance, if the town doesn't have the resources to police the ordinance, then it could be a tremendous problem. So many municipalities, and this is what we're contemplating, this is a work in progress update here, many of the municipalities are waiting to see what happens on May 7th if the state passes the fracking law. And, you know, Nancy Alderman and I have worked very closely on many issues down through the years, and I mentioned to Nancy that Jen was coming in, good presentation, we have a draft ordinance. So I think what we're going to do is wait till May 7th when the session ends. If the state passes it, we will then immediately have the attorneys draft the ordinance for a town meeting vote, and if the state doesn't pass it, then I'm going to bring it back to the Board of Selectmen for the opinion about whether we should move forward with it. I'm committed to it, but I'll need Bill and Sally to weigh in on it.
Okay. Would we be able to find out the, there's other towns in Connecticut that have already passed the ordinance, would we be able to find out what type of financial burden it is to police it? Like what's happening with them now?
You know, it's a good question. Part of the reason, Mary, the state has not enacted this as a law, there are many in Hartford who feel it's not an issue in Hartford. So the information I've received is that right now, this is kind of contrary to the argument that we're hearing, right now, the towns don't know if it's going through. They really don't. The state feels it's not an issue. So we can now make an argument with that, that, well, then why not pass it, right? So we're waiting to see what the data is on this. We don't have the data yet. But when Jen was here, I think she's willing to take calls from residents. And, you know, Val, we can get the number from Mary, and, you know, if that's something you'd like to research, Mary, that'd be valuable information, but I don't think there's any data right now.
Okay, yeah, because I think she was talking about, they were talking about Pennsylvania in specifically.
Yes.
Was going to be looking to release the fracking waste, like, all over, and Connecticut is definitely in the path. So it's kind of like, have it on the books, so that when Pennsylvania tries to, you know, go through North Haven, that it's not permitted, so they would have to go to another town.
You know, it's, it's a good argument. I would not disagree with that. See, what we don't know is, let's say it passes through, and we don't see it, but we find out after the fact, well, what do we do at that point? That's where a lot of us are kind of hazy on. But it's coming, and Mary, I'll tell you, it's coming closer to a conclusion than it's ever been. So here we are, April 5th, May 7th, we'll know either way. I think at the May Board of Select meeting, I'm going to bring it back up, because by then, we're going to have a good indication as to what the state's going to do. And then we'll move forward, or we'll see what the feedback is. We're getting closer to the end on it, Mary.
Okay, thank you.
I think from a passing-through standpoint, it would probably most likely go on 91, because it wouldn't, we wouldn't obviously want it, or it wouldn't be, it wouldn't, the endpoint would not be here in town. But then the other part of the ordinance, I think, too, was, or the things that were discussed, had to do with, you know, using it for road treatment or, you know, road works of.
Application, right.
You know, and I think that, that would be something that would be probably, you know, on a more limited basis as opposed to, you know, because there's no way we could police 91, because we don't, you know, have police on 91. Except, you know, if there's an accident or emergency there, so. But maybe that would be, you know, you know, more applicable to what we could police.
Because she was talking about banning the storage.
Right.
Transfer and application, so she's trying to cover everything.
We could probably cover the storage and the application, but maybe not the transportation.
Okay.
So it's something we really need to pay attention to, it's coming close to the conclusion.
Okay. I wanted to mention once again, House Bill 7047 that passed on October 1st, 2017, requiring, among other things, the mandatory inspections of fire apparatus and the retirement of fire apparatus 25 years of age and older. The volunteer firefighter who spoke at the budget hearing, he talked about how this budget excluded two fire apparatus that the chief needs, one of which would mean a second truck with water. We only have one now. When I spoke about these vehicles previously, Mike, you had stated that they were in the Capitol and were a lease purchase, just like the latter truck, but the Board of Finance took them out of the budget, meaning that these old and outdated fire apparatus will still be on the road. And this removal of the fire apparatus is against the town attorney's advice, who stated to retire the 25 years plus vehicles, because if something were to happen, the town will be liable. I would ask the Board of Finance to move the money to fund these two fire apparatus in the lease-to-purchase situation, because I think that the Board of Finance needs to consider the ramifications of its actions or lack of actions that could result in lawsuits against the town and costly legal fees. And of course, those legal fees could, could be used to hire firemen, paramedics, so it's kind of like, it'd be an irony.
We have more than one truck that carries water, a lot more.
But let me comment for Mary, okay?
Well, I was told that the headquarters, there's one.
The headquarters, yeah.
One with water, yeah.
We have about six. Some carry 500, some 750.
Well, let me address this for Mary, okay? Because a lot of us, all across the state, were confused on this House bill. We at first thought, as did the town attorney, that it was an immediate mandate at the age of 25. But as we went through the process, we had it in the budget. But then we learned, from talking to state legislators, that it's not mandated unless the motor vehicle doesn't certify it. So the chief and I have had a couple of discussions, and right now, we don't have it certified that it's, that it should be out of service. I, I think it's going to play out this way. When they're up for inspection, if the motor vehicles condemns those vehicles, then that's an immediate trigger, we have to comply with the House bill. But that hasn't happened yet.
Okay.
And that's what we're going to be watching when those vehicles are next expected. So the Board of Finance took them out. See, a lot of misinformation out there, folks. There's a lot of misinformation out there. The Board of Finance took it out because they haven't been rejected or condemned yet. And we're going to watch that very closely, Mary, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Would you agree that we do have more than one water, we have, there's one, two, there's engine one, two, three, and four, and six. Five, I'm not sure about.
Yeah, in varying degrees, like you started to say.
I mean, they're in the volunteer.
Like you started to say, in varying degrees of capacity.
Yeah, some have, I think, 500, there's 750, but they're, they're in use. There's quite a few of them.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
They're in the parade, you'll see them all in the parade.
Yes. Fritz. How are you, sir? Good to see you tonight.
Fritz Bedger, 290 Spring Road. Point of information about 84 Washington Avenue, there is an egress on Franklin Road.
Yeah.
So a, and as far as if they did knock it down, they would have to move it back from the road, and so theoretically, depending on the size of the restaurant or whatever facility, you could fit a drive-through in there and have the egress on Franklin Road. Franklin Road has a traffic light into Washington Avenue, so you never know. As far as the fire trucks, yes, we have more than one that is capable of carrying water. My idea about all mandated bills from the federal or state government is if they're willing to deliver it to me and pay for it, I'm perfectly willing to accept it. Thank you.
Fritz, thank you. Jenny Caldwell.
We agree with that.
I just wanted to bring up the issue of, or urge you to think about considering, reconsidering taking over the maintenance of the fields from the school district. And for a couple of reasons. First of all, doesn't matter whether the Board of Ed pays for it or whether the town pays for it, it's still going to be taxpayer dollars, so it's, it's a wash in terms of the taxpayer. But I think for the Board of Ed, the primary responsibility of, of the board should be to be looking at education, and a lot of time has been consumed from the board, dealing with the fields and the maintenance of the fields and the issues around scheduling. I watched the Board of Ed meeting the other, last Monday night, and three, three quarters of the meeting was only about scheduling fields and people being able to play on them and those kinds of things. And I really feel like the Board of Ed should be focusing on, they only have 11 meetings in the year, should be focusing on what the board needs to do and fund in order for kids to perform well educationally. So that's, that's one reason. The other thing is, I think the town has a little bit, a better ability to work with the youth leagues to make considerations where they work together to maintain fields and do some fundraising and things like that, like Max Sinaway many years ago did a lot of fundraising and raised enough money to put up their own billboards and, and things like that. They also work with the town on fertilizing the fields. And I don't think the Board of Ed has that same capacity to be able to work together with those youth organizations to have the, you know, the fields, the turf fields in particular, to have all of the amenities that they want with it. And I'm just very concerned that as they talk about scoreboards and bleachers and fences, that more money isn't pulled out of education in order to, to have those things. That seems like it goes more with the rec department and with rec, with the rec program, which is run by the town.
Yeah, you know, I don't disagree with you. In fact, my offer still stands. I think it's being contemplated by the Board of Ed. I've proposed that, that we could take it on the town's side, and if they choose to agree with that and say, Mike, yes, then we'll do it. So I don't disagree with anything you said.
So how, what would need to happen for that? Would they just need to ask for that? Would that need to come from the Board of Ed?
Yeah, the Board of Ed, they'd have to, Jenny, and, you know, you were on the Board of Ed for six years, I think, right? So you can appreciate this, that they would have to come to me and say, Mike, we took a vote and we'd like the town to take it back, based upon your offer.
Okay, okay, that's good to know. And then the one other question I had, just along the, the lines of, you know, rec sports.
Yes.
My son was involved in Max Sinaway baseball. And Max Sinaway baseball was a tremendous thing for him. He wanted to play hockey. I couldn't afford for him to play hockey, but I could afford for him to do Max Sinaway baseball. And it's come to my attention that it seems that the Max Sinaway is not necessarily getting first rights on Bailey Field and on the sports complex, that those are now being scheduled first for some for-profit baseball teams that are in town.
I think it's the other way around. Max Sinaway.
Well, it should be the other way around, but I've talked to the people who run Max Sinaway, and they've been told, they're, so I'm, maybe this is something that you might want to look into, but they do not have access to Bailey Field or the sports complex anymore. And I know the Board of Ed policy, because I was involved in developing it, and it does say it should go to the, to the rec leagues first before it goes to any other league, and that doesn't seem to be happening right now.
Well, I've met with Victor on this, because Victor Palmer handles this, ladies and gentlemen. He's actively involved with Max Sinaway and the sports leagues, and he told me it's the other way around. They have first, but we're having, we have a situation here that we have other leagues now who are children of North Haven residents, who are parents. And yes, those parents will pay, you know, for those programs, but we have to be able to share the fields with the regular youth sports programs. And Victor tells me Max Sinaway has priority, and then the rest of the leagues fill in the gaps.
All right, well, I'll, I'll get to the information, that I was told that that is not necessarily what's happening. And just to, I'm not saying that those leagues shouldn't be able to play, I just think the priority should go to the, to the youth leagues, and the, those companies make a lot of money, whether it's for profit or not profit, they take a lot of money in, so they have a, a better ability to rent spaces that may, that the nonprofit youth organizations don't have the ability to pay for. So I just, again, I was told that that was a problem, so if you don't think it's a problem, if you could just double-check, because.
Well, we'll double-check with Victor tomorrow, and this is not a Board of Selectmen issue, folks. We have, in the Division of Responsibilities in the town, we have people that handle this, that schedule the meetings, that schedule the practice times, that schedule the fields. Victor Palmer, Public Works, are overseeing that. Now we, now we've put that into Park and Rec, the scheduling, rather than down at the Public Works Garage, but we will, we will look into it, and we'll check with Victor tomorrow, Jenny, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Sherman Katz.
I have a comment about what this young lady just spoke about, with the town taking over the responsibility, the maintenance of the fields. I don't have any problems. I don't have any problem with that. Question number one, what does the town pay for the high school?
The Bannacore Field, Sherman, is about $50,000 a year for maintenance.
The high school. The town is paying for the construction of the high school.
Oh, right, yeah.
The town is paying for the construction of the middle school.
Yes.
Many people in this town don't realize what comes out of the town's side of the budget to support the Board of Education's side of the budget. Now, I agree that sports is part of a curriculum. We need it for the kids. I don't have any problem with the town taking over the maintenance of the fields, as long as there's an exchange on paper, if it has a paper, of dollars from the Board of Ed to the town for the maintenance, for what it costs to do that maintenance. We can't do everything for the Board of Education. We should be reimbursed in some degree. Because when you talk about, you don't want to have a tax increase of 1.7 or 2.2 mils. But eventually, you're going to bring the cost of running the town so high, you have no choice.
You know, this is, you know, here we see two different points of view. And this is part of the challenge that we have, you know, running a government. Because there are different points of view. So Mrs. Caldwell feels the other way. You heard her say that education should be education. Mr. Katz is correct, we have 4.8 million in debt service that we pay for the Board of Ed on the town's side. So, you know, we have a difference of opinions. And, you know, I did make the offer. We'll see what happens, Sherman, if they come back. But I see both points of view on this.
There was one other point that I wanted to make.
Can I just make a comment on that? Obviously, if the costs of taking care of the field switches from the Board of Ed to the town, I would think there would be a corresponding reduction in their maintenance line items.
Well, Sherman's saying, right.
You're just saying the same thing I'm saying, Sally.
Right. I mean, it's, you know, you have a fixed, you have a fixed amount of money that's going to be used to maintain fields. It's, that's, so I agree with Ms. Caldwell that whether the Board of Ed pays it, and they get their money from us, or the town pays it, it's the taxpayer who's paying it. So the Board of Ed line items should go down. As far as the debt, I mean, the town pays the debt because it's the town's debt. The Board of Ed can't issue municipal bonds, only the town can. We bond for the construction of the middle school and the high school. So only the town can issue bonds, and that's why...
I didn't say that was bad. I just want people to understand that there are many things that the town pays for to support the Board of Education.
Right.
Now, the other point that I wanted to bring up was, I could not make it to the meeting on Tuesday night, but I just want to bring something about the fire department. I'm fully in favor of hiring a couple of paramedics to be on a shift basis. We, I've discussed this with a few people, where they would work from 9 to 5, or 10 to 6, the most active time of the day when you need medical services. I don't think that the fire part of the request is as important as the medical part of the request. And this would only cost the town approximately $200,000. And we would have more medical coverage during the most active time of the day when we have most of the medical calls. Because as I understand it, that's what most of the people want, better medical coverage. Thank you.
I agree with that.
All right. So I just wanted to comment on this, because I know you did a lot of work on this. But I met with two members of the Fire Commission, a Republican and Democrat. I met with the fire chief and the president of the union, and they rejected it. They said it wouldn't help the fire department. So all I could do is base it on four experts. These are the experts. The fire chief, the union president, who's a lieutenant, who's an up-and-comer in the fire organization, a Republican and Democrat member of the Fire Commission, they rejected it unanimously. Those are the experts, folks. So unless they come back to us, you know, and say, you know, "We need the two," but they've rejected the proposal.
They're the experts, but they don't decide the budget. We, the people of the town decide the budget. And if there's a greater need for medical services, it makes sense to allocate more resources at the times when the medical calls are busiest. It's such a common practice that it has its own name in contractual provisions. It's called weighted day duty, and many towns operate in that way. And if they're against it, it's because they want 16 firefighters. I don't see how they could say that having 10 firefighters on duty when the needs are greatest is a bad idea. How that is not better than having eight on duty? How could 10 on duty when the medical services are peaking be a bad idea? You're allocating limited resources in an appropriate way, that you're allocating them in a way where it's meeting the greatest need. And so I respect that they are experts, but I can't see how that could be bad, to have 10 versus eight when we're busier. How is that bad?
Mr. Katz.
Many times, when you're running an organization, you really want to do this, but you can't do it for many reasons. There's no reason you can't do this much this year and this much next year. I don't like to have a hammer held over my head and said, where they say, "This is no good, it will not work." Part of it is better than none of it. And I think it's being selfish to eliminate everything.
Now, what we did, just so everyone knows, okay, prior to this discussion that has evolved over the last several months, back in the summer, we met with the fire department, and we went from seven, eight-man shifts. We were on seven-man shifts. We went to eight-man shifts, which has jumped the overtime almost $300,000. So, you know, we've demonstrated that we support the fire department. And let me, you know, we have it here. Do we have it here? So let me show you something, folks. I enjoy working with the North Haven Fire Department, work very closely with them. This is what we've done since I've been in office, starting in 9/10. This is the money that we've put into the fire department. I can tell you, there's no bigger champion of public safety than I am. I work closely with the fire chief and the police chief. I lift weights with the firemen, and I lift weights with the policemen. We work out together. I meet with the fire chief on a regular basis. I meet with the union president of the fire department. I meet with the police department. This is what we've done. Look at some of the dollars we've put in. This takes us up to FY '14. If we go to '14, '15, and '15, '16, we are huge on supporting the fire department on life packs, hoses, personal protective equipment. The chief and I and the fire department are looking at an enhanced level of protection for the fire departments to eliminate firefighters, to eliminate contaminants coming in, into the sleeves, into the collars. If we look at the total amount, including this year, we've put $12,844,000 into the North Haven Fire Department. $12,844,000, including continuing the lease payments on the new ladder truck. And we're committed to the self-contained breathing apparatus, two years at $80,000. The ladder truck's a five-year investment at $210,000 a year. So I enjoy working with the fire department. They're consummate professionals. We have a lot of communications. We may not agree on the issue about the eight firefighters or the 16, but I think this is a demonstration of what the taxpayers have put in. And not many people realize this. So I'm not going to accept the narrative that this administration doesn't support the fire department. We support the fire department 100%. Fritz.
Before Mr. Betker speaks, let me just say, you said that this past summer, it went from seven to eight?
Yes.
I mean, for quite a few budgets, there's been 28 firefighters. I mean, this is an old budget, 16. There's been 28 firefighters and four lieutenants. That's 32. Haven't, I mean, haven't there been eight per shift for a while?
No.
I mean, I know that when they were, when one was out, they worked at seven, but...
We officially went to eight-man shifts on a regular basis, back in the late summer.
Okay. So prior to that, there were not eight men working on a shift?
Not to my knowledge, no. So we'll double-check that, but that's why...
I think there were.
And you see, in this budget, you see the 8% increase for the fire department.
Right.
You see the overtime, Sally, you got to think, right?
For the overtime, absolutely.
So the overtime. And if you look at the capital that I presented the other night, you know, you see it over here. I think that was 16% of the capital, I think, I showed the other night.
Right.
So here we are, folks. And yet, even in light of all this, I am still willing to have the discussions, to see if there's any validity, you know, as the calls for service come in, to see what we can do to augment the department. But I don't think, eight men, over a million, it could be a million dollars, every year after that, ladies and gentlemen, every year. You know, it's a difficult thing for the taxpayers to contemplate when we're already at what it looks like, at least, you know, I'm not going to bring it to the referendum, but you can't have a 1.7 mil increase. And, you know, we hear at the public meetings, when you got to cut back, general government's up 5%, right? Well, general government's up 5% because we booked the salary, the retros, on the general government side. If I took that out and dispersed it through all the departments, you'd see greater increases in the departments, and you'd see general government just about flat. That's what drives the 5%. But people will say, you, general government's up 5%, government's bloated. Well, if, okay, I can take that line item out of there, the salaries for the different departments. We can assign the retros for the union contracts that are unsettled by department, and you'd see general government flat. Fritz, go right ahead, sir.
Mr. Frieda, I totally agree with you in that if I were the executive of this town, I would have to go by the informed information given to me by the experts at the fire department. I too have found them to be very professional and dedicated to the town. I would have to say that when I recall talking with the fire chief, Ms. Buemi had made a very similar proposal in terms of putting the people on when they were most needed. My recollection was that the fire chief cited a labor principle or labor objection in terms of their contractual obligation when he cited his objection to her proposal at that time. So this might not be a logistical or operational thing that we're talking about.
Well, and then that could be changed, because the fire contract is open right now, and we could, you know, right now, we have, and I think for more than just since last summer, we've had 32 firefighters, eight per shift, and they work 24 hours, and then they're off for 72 hours. So you have A, B, C, and D. A works on Monday, B to Tuesday, and then it starts all over again. That's why the chief said my idea wouldn't work, because it would violate the existing labor agreement. But labor agreements can be changed, and many municipalities have weighted day duty in addition to their shifts. But, so I agree. I was there with you, so I agree with your interpretation of what he said.
Let me share this also, Fritz. You know, this is, this is what goes on behind the scenes here. So Chief Paul Janushevsky, who I work very closely with, he brings to my attention about the volunteers, okay? We have a decline in the volunteers. We bring the captains in, in my office, myself, Chief Janushevsky, all of the volunteer captains, okay? One of the things they said is that they're losing, they're losing members because there's a lack of training. So what we do, to make a long story short, I commit to building a training facility here in North Haven, in back of northeast, for the volunteers. We're building a training facility. That not only will benefit the volunteers, but also the paid firefighters. So we've supported public safety, fire, and police. We had a situation where, a few years ago, there was in the budget $11,000 for the volunteer fire departments. We took that out, and then we realized that, you know, that put a burden on the volunteer to captain. So we worked out an agreement with the captains where they don't have to, and I don't want them to, to take money out of their own pocket to fund food in the firehouse when the volunteers come in. So we're working with the volunteer captains to ensure that the volunteers are getting, are not getting short-changed. So we work with the paid fire department, the union, the volunteers. And, you know, we've done, we've done everything we can. This $12,844,000, Fritz, that's about $1,000 more that residents are paying in taxes, that, just for that. So I like to think that we're doing, we've really done a lot. And we will continue to support the fire department. I can't go forward with eight or 16 men. I can't do it. North Haven, there'd be too much in taxes.
I agree. So I think in a couple of years, we should start with two more, and then we could reevaluate at that time. But, you know, people should be reminded that of that $12.8 million, 9.2 was for the renovation of the firehouses.
Well, that's very true. And that's another conversation I had. Now, there's some that may say, "Well, why do we do that?" Well, my response is, "Well, where were you during the referendum when we were supporting the firehouses?" You can't, we can't Monday morning quarterback something that we went to many public meetings, everybody agreed on, we needed renovation of the firehouses, because they were antiquated, they were not in good shape. So we renovated $9 million, 9.2 million for firehouses. So that's still taxpayers' money, right? It's still money.
That referendum was January 24, 2012, in the dead of winter. It could have easily been a question on the municipal ballot a few, two months earlier when 7,000 people voted. Instead, 900 people voted in the middle of January. That's an old trick from way back. That's how, that's how the sale of Orchard Hill happened. The town meeting was in the dead of winter, when very few people showed up. And that, the timing of that referendum is one of the reasons I've returned to town government, quite honestly. But...
Sally, that's an unfair innuendo on your part. I really, I really won't buy off on that.
All right.
Well, I think...
I think you're making, you're making an apples and oranges innuendo that has nothing to do with our discussion tonight.
Well, Mr. Frieda brought up the referendum and said, "Where were the people?" 900 people showed up because of when that referendum was.
That's true for, that's true for so many of the budget referendums we do.
People are used to the budget referendums every May.
And they don't show up in May.
All right. But let me, let me say this, okay?
They don't show up in May.
My point was this, maybe I should have rephrased it. If someone had come to me back then and said, "Mike, we don't need to do four, let's do two, let's pare it back and spend the money back into something else," I would have been open to any discussion at the time. But don't forget, we had a Fire Commission and a Building Committee that was involved with this, that recommended the four firehouses. So, you know, I happen to agree, Sally, with all respect, there was no, we didn't try to just put this through this way. If someone had said to me, "Hey, Mike, let's just do one, let's just do two," all right, that's fine with me. What would you like to see? But everybody at the time involved wanted the four firehouses, Fritz.
One thing, one thing that was fair about that referendum was, there were three separate questions. One for the, for the firehouse appropriation, and then one for the public works, 705,000 for the public works, and the 4.2 million for the milling and paving. I thought that was fair. And, but, you know, I had the same issue with, with the police referendum, which, again, I highly supported the police renovation project, which is ongoing right now. But, you know, we could have saved the town money and had it two weeks later at the general election, rather than a separate referendum two weeks before the general election. I have some friends who work at the Secretary of State's office, and during the fall of 2016, they were obviously inundated with all sorts of questions, because it was a presidential year. And they were telling me that the standard joke up there, when people called in with questions, that was, "Well, at least it's not North Haven," who did a referendum two weeks before a presidential election, when 12,000 people voted. You know, so we were a punchline, because it was so crazy to have a separate referendum. But, you know, I fully supported that project. And I should, I do want to say one more thing, because you're talking about supporting the fire department. And I think it needs to be said that they are a completely dedicated group of career firefighters. And they do far more than just perform their duties as firefighters and emergency medical responders. The outreach that they do in the community and the charitable work that they do is commendable. So I don't think anything, discussion, any discussion on my part, or your part, or Bill's part, should in any way affect the great respect that we have for the wide range of work that they do in town. So that should be made clear. And I agree with you that we have been very supportive of the fire department, not just in the $9 million project, but in the other items on your list up there. It's just simply a matter of economics. We just cannot afford the eight firefighters. So we're in agreement on a lot of things. We have a few...
Yeah, a few.
Things that are...
We're doing good.
That's, we're doing fine.
Fritz, did you have something else you'd like to mention?
I wanted to sum up simply by pointing out... I wanted to sum up simply by pointing out that your support and our town's support of the fire department is, looks that much more hyperbolic when you consider that the number of fires that we actually have in this town are stable and the main reason these calls or the, the main reason we would need any other people on the fire department is to answer the medical calls, which are primarily coming from one place in town, which begs a question right there. Everything else in terms of the number of fires are stable. So the only thing that we would need would be the paramedics.
That, that leads me to following up on a question I asked you a couple of months ago at a Board of Finance meeting about possibly going to, and you had said it was in the works, going to Yale and looking to them for a voluntary contribution because so many of our medical calls are to Divine Street. I don't think citizens realize how often our, our emergency medical providers go to the Yale facility on Divine Street as well as too many other medical facilities in, in town that just aren't capable of handling certain traumatic events that are suffered. So any movement on knocking on Yale's door?
We're taking a different approach, the chief and I, a first step. We're going to be meeting with the urgent care center to, because I want to have a greater understanding of the call priorities there. I want to see what we're responding to. And then...
Everything.
And you see, in some of these urgent care centers, there's a level one, two, three in terms of calls. So do you want a paramedic hypothetically responding to someone who sprained their knee walking out? You want a paramedic, somebody in cardiac arrest? So I have an obligation, ladies and gentlemen, to all of the taxpayers to do as much research as possible. So the chief and I are going to be meeting with the gentleman who handles all this for the urgent care centers that Yale has. So I can have a deeper understanding of how the calls are prioritized.
Well, the chief explained to me that the reason why the, our fire department goes to the big facility on Divine Street is because it's not an urgent, they don't have an emergency room. It's primarily a center for, for treatment, for a variety of things. And so it's, it's not an urgent care facility.
It's not an ER.
There's no ER there, no. It's, so that's why we're going there so often. And, you know, and my first response was, you got a bunch of doctors there, don't, don't they know CPR? But, you know, why are, why are North Haven's emergency medical responders going there on the dime of our taxpayers? But they are, they go there hundreds of times. And if you live, I got an interesting email from a resident who lives on State Street and she says, it's a parade of the fire department going by on State Street, heading down there. So I suggest a strong knock on Yale's door.
All right, well, I think David and then Jenny had a, Dave, did you have a question or, because Jenny Caldwell has another comment. Dave, you're good? All right, Jenny Caldwell, okay.
Quick thing that I forgot to mention before, when you were talking about economic development and things coming in, two things. First is, I love Trader Joe's, so I would be in support of that. And the second thing is, there's a lot of talk always about different stores and restaurants coming in. But I hope that there is some time spent on things to do here because from the young people in, who live in North Haven, the especially college-age kids, you know, high school kids, their biggest comments are around that there's not a lot to do. So I would hope we look at different recreational options as well because, you know, if you want people, young people to stay in North Haven and live in North Haven, that's what they're going to be coming for. They can work in another town and then go live someplace where there is activity. And so that would just be something to consider because I hear a lot about the restaurants and the stores and things like that, but...
What do you mean, like a, like bowling, a bowling alley? We used to have a couple of bowling alleys in town.
It could be, it could be a bowling alley, it could be, you know, Wallingford has the jump zone thing. I'm, I don't know exactly what, what, but there are options for things that you could, you could do besides just shopping.
Bowling's too, too old-fashioned, I think.
Active stuff.
Bowling is, bowling's for old...
Pool hall, I don't know, a jazz club.
We have, we have a nice pool hall over on, over on Sacramento Road.
I have a pool in my basement, I have a pool in my basement.
A little small for you, Dave? All right, okay, well, okay, good suggestions then, all right then, thank you. David Durant.
My, getting back to the fire department.
Would you, Dave, I know, well, can we bring the microphone to Dave?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So only Dave, so North Haven TV's audience can see you. Thank you, Fritz.
Thank you. Getting back to the fire department. Here about four or five years ago, if I remember correctly, I was talking to you and I said to you, be careful with the fire department. Careful with the fire department, and you said, why? And I said, because they're looking to put a paid department in this town. And you made the comment to me, it'll never happen.
In the volunteers, right, we have volunteer houses, right?
In Monowees?
It's starting with medical. We need more medical coverage. We can't save everybody in the world. Terrible thing to say, but it's a common fact, okay? Poor choice on a situation that happened in North Haven, okay, which started this whole thing rolling. If you have two EMTs, this was always the protocol, you have two EMTs at that structure fire. When that emergency medical call comes in, as long as they're not taking care of an injured fireman, they leave the scene and they go to the emergency medical call. EMTs are EMTs first, then they are firemen. So if you're going to put two more EMTs on or an EMT and a paramedic, I don't know of any fire department that's going to say, oh, we don't want that, we want all eight men. The reason why they want all eight men, it gives them a larger department and it also gives them the opportunity to take a few of those firemen and put them in a volunteer house. We have a brand-new firehouse down in Monowees. Why is there a day room? The chief's answer is going to be, well, in case we have bad weather or we have a storm and the guys need to sleep over. But why is there a female locker room in men's locker room? It's very obvious, if you sit back and look at what is going on and what they're trying to get, that he's looking to make a paid department. This town has been fighting paid department as long as I know, and that's 35 years. John Rosadini, God rest his soul, every budget tried to get more firemen because John's pension was based on how many people he had underneath him. Fire engines. Fire engines, why do we need two more fire engines? It's ridiculous. We need a fire engine that looks like a, an army truck? Where is that truck going to go? Up to Peter's Rock? The road to Peter's Rock is very narrow. How often do they go up there? Maybe twice, three times a year? Is it really necessary to spend that kind of money? The last time I went to a commissioner's meeting, I'm sitting in the audience and I happened to know, notice that there's four white shirts instead of two white shirts. I said, oh, we got new lieutenants. No, they weren't new lieutenants. One was a training chief and one was some other kind of chief. Where, where is it that a town with 38, with 40 men on it need all this management? For what?
35.
I would just, I'm sorry?
35 people.
35 people, whatever it is. I just don't understand their, their reasoning to all of this. And every single one of the professional people that you spoke to are looking to put paid firemen in the volunteer departments. Now, if there's a problem with the volunteers and the chief sees it's, there's a pattern starting to be set, then I can understand it. But has all that been investigated? Has all that been recorded? Do we know that certain departments have had open alarms or not? Or is it hearsay from the department? May not be from the chief. Could be from one of the lieutenants, one of the guys that are on the truck. I think before we give the, the fire department the amount of money that they want, I think there's a lot of investigation that should be going on.
All right, thanks, Dave. I want to say though that we did add an assist, we did add an assistant chief, Scott Martis, and that was designed to help us capture revenue from doing billing. It's called, we, it was once called bundled billing that was handled through AMR.
For the ambulance, right.
For the ambulance. And so Scott Martis, who was one of the quote, white shirts that Dave was talking about, he's performing valuable service and there's a revenue item, line item coming in on that, so...
Is his salary being offset by that?
Well, you know, Dave, that's a good question. That was the intention. Now, he's only been on board now as the assistant chief for, let's say, four months, let's say. So we're, we're watching the revenue coming in versus the expenses. So it's a good question. That, that was what it was designed to do, to bring in more revenue than the expenses, Dave.
Right.
So, and I'll always support that, an additional resource when there's trailing revenue coming in. Mary?
Okay, Mary White Summerlane. I'd just like to make a couple of comments, just some information that I happen to be aware of. I know the Monowees response time from headquarters is the longest in town. So I believe it's over eight minutes. So that would be a reason as to why in the future, I think the chief would be looking to house paid firefighters there. Let's see. As far as the volunteer firefighters, things have changed. I mean, we all know this. Years ago, there used to be like 130 volunteer firefighters and now there's maybe 35, 40 certified. And what's happening with the volunteer firefighters is during the day, when there are second and third, you know, simultaneous calls for medical service, the volunteer fighters, firefighters, they don't respond to medical calls. But anyway, let's say there's a fire, okay, or smoke or smell or something and the firefighters need to, need to respond. What happens is the volunteer firefighters, when they're, you know, reached or asked to come in and respond, they're not responding. He's getting like zero, maybe one, and that's not helpful. And why are they not responding? It's not because they don't want to, it's because they're working full-time. Because that's, that's the, the way it is nowadays. So I just kind of wanted to make that clear. Could you, Mike, give us a little status update, update on the PSA takeback? I know you said it is in progress. I know you said we are proceeding on a path and, to take it back and that it is going to take a while. And can you explain, are we on this path solo like Milford, who as we know was successful? And I believe they were on a solo path? Or are we in a coalition, so to speak, with other towns? Because obviously to capture this PSA is definitely beneficial because we would, as a town, would be able to bid out the ambulance, you know, put out, the ambulance service out to bid. And we would be able to set terms that we were looking for in that ambulance service. You know, for example, time response, mandatory paramedic on that ambulance. So if you could just, if you don't mind?
We're a solo mission on this, Mary.
Okay.
There's no coalition.
Okay.
It's just us right now.
It's just us?
Just us, yes.
Okay. So do you have any idea how long it did take Milford to capture their, the PSA?
I don't know exactly. Perhaps a year, maybe, I'm not really sure.
Okay.
But they were successful. It was a long, drawn-out process.
Right.
And they did win it. So this is something that I can't predict what the outcome is going to be on this. But I've given the fire department the okay to pursue it and we'll see where it ends up.
Okay, but was definitely in process.
Yes.
Going, ongoing. Okay, I just wanted to talk just briefly about the fields and the maintenance and the town taking over the maintenance. I think I, people need to be reminded that the sprint turf maintenance contract is $10,000. And, and these fields are obviously brand-new. They're not going to require a tremendous amount of maintenance because they're, they're new. Seams are not going to be ripping and, and things like that. So as far as the town taking over the maintenance for that, I, I just really don't see the urgency in doing that. Because, believe me, the town is going to pay for the replacement of those fields, whether that's eight, nine, or 10 years. So the town's going to be helping out the Board of Finance. There, there's just no doubt in my mind. That's just a fact. And I just wanted to end by saying, you know, when we, we understand that the fire department, they're, the union and the way that the, the men, firemen work, they work on these 24-hour shifts.
Right.
And so, but, you know, times are changing and, and the need in this town is changing. We need the paramedic on during this, like Sally's talking about, during this, the day, whether it's 10 to 6 or whatever it is. It's not going to answer all the calls and be the, you know, that's it, we don't need to do anything else. But I just, I find it disheartening to, that suggestions perhaps might have been made, you know, in the meetings. I'm not suggesting that you're revealing contract negotiation things, but you did talk about a meeting that took place and it was a resounding no as far as, well, can we do this? Can we have this weighted day duty?
The two firefighters, yes, it was a resounding no.
Yeah, yeah. So in the end, the, the residents are going to suffer. In the end, the second and third simultaneous calls are not going to be answered by the fire department. They will be answered by AMR, who will respond eventually with two EMTs. And if you need the expertise of a paramedic, you know, you're, you're really out of luck. And so it's just, it's like I said, it's just disheartening to me, having had my father die and I explained at, you know, in detail, basically how had a paramedic responded, when he had his heart attack, he would be alive today. So, I mean, these, this is life and death here. And I just, I just, as a taxpayer, I just find it so frustrating that times are changing. The volunteer firefighters are working full-time during the day. Our calls, over 63% of those calls are medical calls. And, and yet, you know, we're not equipped for it. And I think we, we just have to, have to do something. So I don't know, call them back for another meeting or something, but, but we, we really want something. You know, to do nothing...
You want to, you want the two.
Yeah, but, but for me, to do something is, is just, is just, is just not acceptable. Because then we're in the same situation where the, the paramedic goes out on the first 911 call and then a simultaneous call comes in and that paramedic, you know, we're tax, we're taxpayers. We expect, when we call 911, we expect that the fire department is going to answer, you know, going to respond. So, I don't know, I just, I'm sorry, but that's, that's how I feel.
Well, I think too, we have to maybe, you know, I think we've talked about a lot of different suggestions and maybe it needs to be, you know, like you mentioned, you know, the PSA and two paramedics and, you know, the, the... and two paramedics and, you know, I think the suggestion that maybe they be on during, I'm not convinced that during, you know, the 10 to 6 is really the peak times because that's Monday through Friday and, you know, medical emergencies quite often happen, you know, on night and the weekends, you know. So, you know, so maybe there's a number of things that need to be done, you know. And again, maybe just, we can't do them all at once, so. So, but again, I think everybody understands, you know, what, you know, what you're saying and what Sally said. And I think Sally's come up with some good suggestions or good ideas and all of which, you know, I think maybe, you know, maybe won't be able to be resolved, you know, in this budget season and before, you know, just based on where we're sitting in terms of the proposed budget right now and the fact that the 1.71 mil increases doesn't even contain any of this, so.
And again, we're not the experts here. You know, I mentioned earlier, we have a great staff there. And they're the experts, so.
But I think any increase in personnel in fire will be probably two years away. That's my guess. But, and Bill's right, a medical emergency could happen at any time. But statistically, all the examples that the chief gave during the workshop of multiple calls coming in were all in the Monday through Friday, normal business hours. That's when most of the people are up and about and doing things. That's when all of these medical facilities are open, which again drains a lot of the emergency medical calls. So certainly, emergency calls can happen at 2:00 in the morning on a Sunday. But if, you know, we're trying to play a statistical game here and provide the best service we can. So that's why I think it's a good idea to have wait-a-day duty and allocate our limited resources in a way that will effectuate meeting the needs when the needs are the greatest. Which is, you said 10 to 6. I said 8 to 4, maybe 9 to 5, whatever. It's definitely something that should be considered in the future, so.
Especially when you throw in the, you know, I think you mentioned, you know, which, you know, earlier too about the urgent care, you know, and then Mike said about triaging those. And I don't know if we have the data like to say, well, you know, if we backed out these, then maybe it shifts to a different.
We have no data on that.
Yeah, so it's almost like, I know, I think we know the numbers, but not the criticality of the calls.
Right, but certainly the percentage of medical calls has increased. The chief explained to me with some impressive statistics that the types of, there's several types of calls that the fire department no longer goes to. Certain alarm calls and things like that. There's a professional, there's a doctor that oversees what types of calls the fire department should go on. And he, a while ago, had made some suggestions. So even with that reduction in types of calls that they answer, we're still seeing an increase in medical calls. So the percentage of total calls that are medical in nature is increasing. That's why I am focusing so much on two paramedics, the wait-a-day duty that many municipalities, especially of our size, commonly utilize.
Okay, all right. Any other comments? We happen to have Lieutenant Brian Marino here.
Yes, you do. How's everybody doing? Brian Marino, Grove Road. In my 17th year in this department. I spent both time on the volunteer side and on the career side. I am currently a lieutenant in the career department and also the union president. The reason why you haven't seen many of us here at the microphone, right? You got to see Chief Paul Janischewski's numbers during the workshop hearing in January. And then you heard a little bit from a volunteer lieutenant during the budget hearing the other night. It's because we're in the business of taking the high road. There has been a lot, actually majority of absolute untruths about this department that has come back from this side of the table and the crowd for about the last six months to a year that are just absolutely preposterous. We've turned this need, this fire department need into a paramedic-only thing. I've watched our department grow by leaps and bounds in the 17 years that I've been here. We have been bursting at the seams for a long time. I'm hearing a lot of untruths from people over here on this side of the fence that conspiracy theories about getting career staffing in just for the sake of having career staffing. It's out of control. The wait-a-day shift thing, Ms. Boheme, you took such a small percentage, a calculated percentage of what we do. That's less than 1%. The chief was just giving you one example, right, to be able to put it on the screen there. There is no waited time where we do calls. During that meeting the other night, the entire fire department was out. It was between 6:00 and 8:00 at night. The fire department had ran about eight or nine calls of service just during that meeting, during the workshop hearing the other night. I'm here to set the record straight. If anybody has any questions about the fire department, we should be talking to an expert on the fire service, expert in the fire department. Chief Janischewski had a great, well-articulated budget workshop. He laid it out there. He was selected by you guys to run the fire department here. He is an emergency manager. All these ideas, and I love the brainstorming. It's great when people from the community brainstorm. But none of you guys are experts in this field. The chief is the expert in the fire department. He wouldn't come up and propose all this stuff to you guys if it wasn't absolutely necessary. I've commonly responded on a fire apparatus here that is 34 years old. That's as many years as I have been on planet Earth. And that is a truck that I've responded to 30 calls on personally this year. The fleet is falling apart. We've been bursting at the seams for a long time. Our dedicated volunteer department is now dwindled in numbers. It's down to less than one-quarter of what it was when I was a volunteer member of this department. These things don't change. Turning this into just a paramedic-only issue is also very, very wrong. The reason why our fire numbers are down, Mr., I'm not sure, I've never met you before.
Betker.
Betker. The reason why those numbers are down is our career staffing here. When we are in service and on scene, we're putting out these small fires that don't make the news. Right, the departments you see, all volunteer communities where things are, you're getting big, huge dollar loss fires. That happens because there's a long amount of time between the initial 911 call and the time of actual response. That's not happening here. We are saving a lot of property. If you guys see the chief's report, the monthly chief's report at the fire commission meeting, you'll see a noticeable amount of loss. There's a calculated dollar amount that's calculated every month through our EMTers program that could easily spit out. That affects things like our insurance service organization, our ISO rating, that affect all of your, what you guys are paying for homeowners insurance. But I see all these ideas and a lot of people are just spitballing and throwing things at the wall to see a little stick. It's really wrong. And honestly is wrong. There are so many experts out here. We have a ton of great people in our department and that's what you guys hire us to do. We are the experts here. I don't see anybody making rash generalizations about the sanitation department or what should we be doing there and micromanaging what the police department's doing on the ground floor with their responses and whatnot. It's just wrong. And I empower everybody in this town to call fire headquarters and ask to speak with a member of the chief's office or speak with me. But we can't keep, A, kicking the can down the road with this stuff every single year and then kind of compiling a bunch of lies about the department. I mean, sir, there is no conspiracy theory, right? We need staffing down there. If you live on Warner Road or if you live on Summerlane or Sugar Hill Road, it takes us 10 minutes to get out here, get out there from central fire headquarters. That's real. Right, you could do that by regular response time. It's going to take 10 to 12 minutes to get down there from here. And it's been like that forever. If you live on the Upper West Side, all the way to the top of King's Highway, all the way out Mount Carmel, that takes a long time to get out there. We keep building more and more neighborhoods, right? All this economic development, all these apartment buildings that are going up. All these things that we keep building, we haven't been taking care of the infrastructure behind it. This is the reason why we're here and talking about this. We're bursting at the seams. We have been for a long time. The cuts that you were talking about came years ago when we stopped going to ETOH calls, or more commonly referred to as drunk calls, calls for psychological emergencies. We no longer go on those. We've cut back our calls very, very much. We stopped doing car lockouts. The people that call and say they locked their keys in the car. The chiefs of the past couple generations have cut our call volume back as much as they can with the current staffing that we have. But our medical call volume has relatively stayed the same. It's been roughly between 60 and 70% consecutively for the past 20 years. We haven't seen a major jump in it. We've seen a major jump in just the total call volume that's happening. And that's with cutting out a bunch of different calls. But I do empower everybody here in this town to reach out to the fire department, to find out the real issues that we're having and the real things that he's proposed to fix that. These, I mean, taking no action is definitely not the right thing to do. And I don't blame you guys for the transgressions of previous generations. But we do have a heavy infrastructure problem here. Not just with here, with the schools, which we're starting to remedy slowly. We can't keep doing this, though. We can't keep coming to town meetings and proposing that there's all these problems here with all these different fixes without taking the consideration of the experts in this. I mean, do you guys agree? You'd have to agree.
Well, we said it earlier, we're not the experts. These are, he's one of the experts that I was telling you about earlier, whom I've met with. So they're the experts, we're not.
How long has there been 28 firefighters and four lieutenants?
We accepted a SAFE-RAT grant in 2009, which went to implementation in 2010, which added those four additional men. That was the start of our paramedic program in 2010.
So intense, so there were, from 2010, there were 28 firefighters, four lieutenants.
Up until that point, there was 24 firefighters and four lieutenants.
Right, so for eight years or so, there's been 28 plus 4, 32. Have, how many years has it been? There are currently four shifts, is that correct?
There's currently four shifts, yes.
And they work 24 hours on, 72 off?
That's correct.
That's correct?
Yep.
And how, and there are eight men per shift?
That's correct.
How long has that been in effect?
That's been in effect since August of 2016. So from the implementation of SAFE-RAT grant in 2010, we would run down firefighters. And just to put this out there, that SAFE-RAT grant was not to start a paramedic program. We were multitasking when we did that, which was a great thing. We were able to start ALS care in this town, which I've got to witness many, many people die right in front of me from not having that. That was a great thing that we started in 2010. We accepted that SAFE-RAT grant to make a four-man engine company out of fire headquarters because the federal government recognized that we only had one functioning engine company in this town. So it was a very easy grant to get passed. So that original grant was for our engine company, for you guys, for fire protection reasons.
So prior to 2016, but going back to 2010, when there were 28 and four, how were they allocated, the 32?
We were staffed to eight per shift, but when there was a vacancy, it wasn't filled.
Okay, so that, right, so the big difference is, so since 2010, there have been eight per shift. But in 2016, that's when, and you and I discussed this at the fire headquarters a month ago or so. It started in 2016 is when if there was a vacancy, somebody was out, out sick, on vacation, whatever, starting in 16, they would fill it to keep it at eight.
That's correct.
But it was always at eight.
Right, you always had eight assigned to each division.
Okay, that's what I thought. So that, it is not new that there's eight men per shift.
No, that's not new. That's since 2010.
But so since 16, we've been, if somebody is out in a shift, we keep it at eight. We fill it. So that explained the overtime, which as you recall, I was very supportive of the overtime line item being higher so that it didn't always seem over budget. You and I talked about that quite a bit. And so this year, I'm glad that it is being budgeted to reflect what's happening. So don't say I'm not trying to help.
Well, I know you're trying to help, but sometimes.
And originally, I wanted a compromise of four firefighters. And I was treated very badly by the fire commission for that idea. I said, all right, then, that's when I came up with the wait-a-day duty idea. Why would it be bad to have a 10-man shift when statistically, of course, calls could, why would it be bad to have a 10-man shift, let's say, Monday through Friday, 9 to 5?
I'm going to use your words. This is not, this is not a statistical game.
I know.
We can pull that from the records.
But why would it be bad to have 10 men for those 40 hours per week?
It wouldn't be bad, of course it wouldn't. And we would be capturing a decent amount of call volume, but we wouldn't be capturing all the call volume.
No, I understand that.
This is a town that we know of on the books has a little over 24,000 people per the 2010 U.S. census. We know as emergency workers, us in the police department, that that number is far from true. That that number is going to be closer to 30,000. Our daytime population adds anywhere between 20 to 25,000 people, notwithstanding of the people traveling on I-91, which happens literally around the clock. There is no rhyme or reason.
So 25,000 people are coming in to work?
Between work and passing and going and shopping. It brings more people into this town than you would believe.
So it overcomes the number of citizens that leave town to go work? Because obviously, you know.
We still do a decent amount of private dwelling costs during the day, during the week.
Absolutely, we have a lot of people home all day.
You know, we could beat this, we could beat this one up all day about, you know, we have COVIDian down the street that runs weighted shifts on the first and second shifts. And that place commonly has 3,000 people in it during its first two shifts.
But to reiterate, you don't think it's a bad idea to have 10?
I'm not going to let you use my own words against me.
Okay, what did you, I asked you.
It's not, it's not a bad thing, but it's not, it's not the most effective thing that we could do here. Our highest dollar loss fires and our highest loss of life fires happen during the overnight hours. Nobody's brought that up. Everybody's talking about the paramedic issue, which, sure, you guys have one paramedic that covers 30,000 people in a 22-square-mile area. That's pretty scary, especially if you live out there in farm country, down in the South Side of Monowees, or you live on the Upper West Side, or you live close to the Hampden Town Line. It is a scary thing to think about. But the fire, the fire issues have not been talked about here. It's been dismissed since the chief's budget workshop meeting. You know, we've kind of started turning it into just a paramedic-only issue, which it isn't. We are, we're multitaskers here. That's how we're able to accomplish fire-based EMS. There are mountains and mountains of evidence that talk about how fire-based EMS is a lot more effective than all the other EMS systems that are out there. And that's because we're here and we're available. We would be better suited at following the plan that the chief has proposed. Or filing for another SAFE-RAT grant.
Right. The reason that I'm focusing on the paramedics a bit is because I sat with the fire chief and the chairman of the fire commission for four hours and he started the conversation, looking me dead in the eye and saying, this is all because of what happened in August of 2017. So his focus was on a paramedic issue.
On that August 3rd of 2017, there also was a very high-dollar loss fire that started that whole thing.
Right, but he was focusing on the tragic loss of life. That's what he told, so that's what inspired.
What everybody needs to know is that day, August 3rd, 2017, was not an irregular day for us. Multiple calls going off is something that happens every single day here. We've been missing calls for a long time. There's plenty of residents here that could probably call in and say, yeah, eventually an ambulance showed up in my house 20 minutes later. That's not, that happens. That's not a, that's not a farce. If the fire department units are out, that means that their ambulance units are out as well. It's hard for them to send ambulance units. There's not, there's a finite amount of them as well. So we should be, we should be acting upon some of the recommendations of the chief. Not all of them all at once. We're reasonable people. We have been reasonable people for a long time. You look at what we've worked at, and yeah, there's been a lot of stuff, talk back and forth about the firehouse construction and whatnot. At this point, it is what it is. I'm not going to comment on that because I don't want that to detract away from the real issues that are happening here. Brick and mortar doesn't save lives. Somebody's, I've heard people say that at these meetings before. It can't be more true. We don't need to be told how we're the most dedicated department that you guys have seen and all that hoorah. We get it. And our guys act completely without, watching these, watching these meetings is very, it's a morale killer. Because you look at the people that are standing up, faces that we've never seen before, and they're talking down about what they should be doing. And we have people making suggestions that are, you know, borderline preposterous. And our guys still get on those rigs and answer the 911 calls. And the volunteers still get up in the middle of the night and get on those old 30-year trucks and still get out in the snow during their kids' birthday parties and everything. That's how dedicated our members are. Most people aren't that strong-willed.
Okay, thanks Brian, thank you. Mr. Katz?
I need to respond to that. I'm a member of the fire department focus group. So I've been at probably half a dozen meetings with the chief and eight to 10 other people. And we listen to the same, and many more things than were presented at the budget hearing. One of the things that he talked about, to my recollection, I don't have my notes, was the increased medical. That was a very big thing with him. Apparatus was another thing. You're getting some apparatus. I'm not, we're not experts in fire. This is what we're looking at. What can we afford for you now? And if we can't afford a full eight-man crew, you're not willing to take two, not willing to take two, I don't understand your reasoning, you're saying to the people, we really don't care about you, we want eight or nothing, that's not right, you do steps, if you can't get eight, be satisfied this year with two, maybe next year you get six, two isn't going to solve the problem the way you see it, but it's going to get you closer to what you want to be, and I think you have to give a little bit, because we, you know, we don't have that much to give you as individuals, if our taxes go up, you have people in this, this town that have to make a decision between medication and food, because they just can't afford to live here, and we don't want to throw them out of the town, so I'm asking you as the union president, the representative of your people, to try and bend a little bit, I negotiated with unions for 30 years, there's no such thing as you can't do it, the, the company, the town has the right to run its business, they can put two more people in there, you may object to it, but, and I haven't read your contract, but I believe they can do it as long as they're not violating your contract, so think about that a little bit, yeah, you haven't gotten much in a couple of years, but you sure are getting a lot this year as far as money.
All right, let's, uh, let's get Jenny call.
I just want to say I support the fire department 100%, and I had a fire, I woke up in the middle of the night, my apartment was on fire, it was the fire department that came and saved my life, so I think that you, you know, if you haven't been on that side of it, you don't realize, I understand the medical, the point of the medical calls, but a fire can end up as, as deadly as a paramedic not showing up to, um, to get your heart started again, so I, I do think that really, I don't have enough expertise about fire, but I will say that I would certainly be willing to have my taxes go up for an item like that much more than some of the other stuff that's in the budget, I, you know, I, there are things that I don't want my taxes to go up for, I would be willing to pay more to have, to know that when I pick up the phone and I call 911 and I say my house is on fire, or I, um, I have a, a medical emergency that someone's going to show up, uh, I had, I've had a couple of situations in which the fire department came, um, not here in North Haven, but in, uh, North Carolina, and they were there within seconds, um, and I just always know, knew they would be there, it never occurred to me until this year that that would not be the case, um, so I just, you know, I don't know what the answer is and I, I, you know, but I just would like to say that I, I support the fire department, and I, I just think that if they need things for us to be safe, we need to really be hearing that and, um, and not putting a judgment on, I got it, my, you know, I understand the issues with your wallet, because I have the same problems, um, but I think there are many things in our budget that we should be looking at, I spoke to some of them the other night, that should be top of the line before we look at the fire department.
But we're not, you realize that in this budget, it's a million dollars worth of capital, and the rest of it's salary increases.
I, I spoke to that the other night, what I, some of my concerns about salary increases.
But what you spoke about, I think, if it was you, Jenny, you can't take away salary increases from the fire department and put it back into new men.
No, I, I was speaking on some other issues around salary, which I don't want to get all into here, people can watch the, uh, the budget meeting for the other night, because that, that, there, there is a lot of increases that happen automatically that I think should be looked into and, um, and is an issue, and is a lot of money, it's not a little bit of money, I have a lot of it tracked out over the last five years.
On the town side, or the board?
On the board of Ed's side.
Well, not on the town side, I can tell you that.
No, I know that, I was speaking up for the town the other night, I do believe, so, but I just think that, you know, there, there are things that can be examined in the budget, and I, I don't know exactly what they are, but it, it is something people should really consider, that, you know, right now, when you're looking at your budget, you might not be thinking about the fact that you could wake up and your house could be in flames and there might not be someone on the way to get you out, and that is, then your wallet's not going to matter at all, because you're not going to need the money.
All right, thank you. Brian?
Uh, Mr. Katz, I apologize if you took my comments out of context about, uh, not willing to flex and whatnot, but I, I think one thing that is forgotten here, because we've made the fire department into a pet for the past six months here, uh, it's absorbed pretty much 80 to 90% of every town meeting, every finance meeting, the, the budget hearing the other night, is that we're talking about one of the smallest budgets on the town side, very small, correct, Mike? One of the, the fire department is substantially smaller than the PD budget, the public works budget, and we've put so much time and attention into talking about the fire department's budget, and it's one of the smallest budgets on the town side, uh, the willingness to flex, my members are of the most flexible people here, uh, it kind of goes without saying, it's, it's part of our job, uh, it's very hard for, for me to be able to answer a kind of a baked question like that, but, yeah, would we be willing to take a good-faith agreement from the town on a phasing of hiring members in? Sure, uh, do I think the town needs to seriously consider another SAFRA grant from our federal government to offset the costs of hiring personnel coming in? Yes, I absolutely do, I think that's a great thing to do, it worked out very, very well for us, uh, last time, we're the ones on the working end, we've seen the difference of the four-man engine company here, how it's made you guys safer and made the firemen safer at the same time, we've seen the impact of the paramedic service here, we're the ones actually performing it, we're seeing it all the time, you know, we're not, we're bound by, by town standards, we're bound by our own personal code of ethics and conduct to not post things on social media sites, right, and we don't exploit, everybody's pretty humble in our profession, right, we're, you're not going to see it, uh, clear as day, every day, all the things we're doing, but I bet you you guys see some red and green trucks, and white trucks moving around about this town pretty frequently, especially if you live anywhere close to the center like I do, they move non-stop, so as far as a good-faith thing, we work, we're pretty flexible, we work with the town very well, we have for a long time, at least with this administration we have.
We're talking about the future about that, we're talking about this one thing.
Yeah, this one thing.
Personnel, increased personnel.
And I, I'm not going to get into semantics of how, you know, you won't see the full effect of how, there's, there's four shifts, so two members being hired is going to benefit two shifts right off the hop, having extra guys, but there'll still be two shifts that don't have those two guys on it, we could talk semantics about this for days, uh, this is one of the things that I do, and I know the fire department extremely well, uh, as Select Manfredi said, I am considered an expert in this field, I could talk about it all day and all night, uh, but as far as being flexible, especially flexible with future, yes, and this, this town has a way of always kind of squeezing down on the fire department for some reason, we've always been the children that nobody wanted, and it's been like that, we could dig into the history books and figure out, does anybody know why we have a career department, what event happened in the mid-1960s, right, two children died on Laura Lane, right, and there was nobody available to go and take care of them, because we had an all-volunteer department at the time, so just a little brief history on that, so if we really want to dig deep as to why our fire department's here and what we do, call the fire department, ask to speak to a chief officer, come, talk to me, I'm, I'm easily findable, I'm here, I live in the center of town, I work at 11 Broadway, come find us on the website, send me messages, do whatever you can, but, you know, I, I see a lot of, a lot of false truths coming out, being talked about the fire department, a simple phone call can quell a lot of that for you guys.
Why would hiring two new firefighters only benefit two shifts?
Because there's four total shifts, there's eight, eight guys in each shift, Sal.
Yeah, I know that.
We hire two guys, say you add a guy to Platoon A and Platoon B, Platoon C and Platoon D are still running.
Well, that's not what we're suggesting, we're suggesting that the two, I'm suggesting that the two new people work Monday through Friday, let's say 9 to 5, so during that period of time, there'll be 10 men, sometimes it'll be Shift A, sometime it'll be Shift B, sometime Shift C, sometime Shift D, we're not, they're, they're, they're not.
You're speaking of, you're speaking of working conditions, and that's a matter of pending negotiations, that will not be discussed in the public forum.
Okay, well, well, you, you, okay, but I'm just saying, my idea is not putting them to a shift, it's putting them to a timeframe.
All right, so I think we, we've kind of talked this through pretty much tonight, okay, so I want to thank everybody for this discussion, thank you. All right, any other comments? All right, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
All right, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.